We're going to call a order with the General Board Meeting, Board of Education Meeting, Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Fung Shing, call the roll.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Step.
Here.
Mrs. Ennis.
Here.
Four members present.
If we could stand for the pledge and remain safe for a moment of silence. Pledge and deed. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we have some amazing seventh graders who are presenting their National History Day projects. Bella, do you want to start? Can you just go up to the microphone and state your name?
My name is Bella Judd. My National History Day project is the Boston Tea Party. So on December's, in December seventeen seventy-three, the Sons of Liberty threw three-hundred-and-forty-two chests of tea into the Boston Harbor due to the harsh taxation from Parliament of the tea. Now, all this happened because of the East India Trading Company losing a bunch of money because the colonists all started drinking smuggled Dutch tea, which was also bad for Britain because the East India Trading Company was, had steady revenue for Britain. So, Britain offered a way for the East India Trading Company to get out by offering them to, like, tax the colonists on tea, lead, glass, everything. And Britain thought that the colonists would be happy because, oh, the cost of tea was lower because it would help the East India Trading Company. Well, they're upset because the East India Trading Company, like, controlled every single tea thing, like, in Massachusetts. So, therefore, they cut out all colonial merchants and local merchants all around Massachusetts. So, this led Samuel Adams and the Sons of Liberty to raid three British tea ships and dump ninety-two thousand pounds of tea into the war. Now, after this little incident, Parliament got mad and said that they were closing the Boston Harbor and colonists had to quarter British troops on command. Now, this really did set well with the colonists and before this chain of events made the American Revolution happen because this is when Britain started letting their troops occupy Massachusetts and all of the thirteen colonies and everywhere else. So, it's almost a good, you know, ripple effect of things. Down here, I have my little, um, the crates represent the crates that were thrown into the Boston Harbor. Um, this also acts as my timeline for ever since the Seven Year War, which really made Britain go into debt too, and leading up to November seventeen seventy-three when the Dartmouth arrived with the first shipment of tea.
Is there somebody looking?
Right up front.
Right over there.
My name is Carter DeSone.
My name is Mason McFadden.
And my name is Luke Habermell. Our topic that we chose was the U-2 spy plane incident. It all started during the Cold War when a U-2 spy plane was shot down from Soviet, from the Russians, and it all started a debate about whether or not President Eisenhower was ready, was right or wrong to keep sending a plane over, which he sent over twenty-five times. Our, the theme that we had to go along with this year was debate and diplomacy.
So, our topic aligns with the debate and diplomacy with, by showing that when the U-2 spy plane invaded Russia, um, after it was shot down, the Americans and Russians had debated over whether President Eisenhower was right to keep sending planes over Soviet territory. Um, afterwards, the diplomacy was that both, um, countries managed to come to a peaceful solution and, uh, come to a, uh, a civil solution.
Um, it was like his first ever spy swap with, uh, the Soviet, with the Soviet Union and...
It was the first ever spy swap ever, and it happened with the Russians sending over Gary Powers, who was a pilot of the U-2 plane, who was sentenced to ten years in jail and worked at, in the Soviet, in Russia, but was off, after two years of his sentence, he was later traded for Bruno Pabon.
So, the impact that our topic had on history was that it was very controversial. So, not only had this, um, before the incident, Russia and the United States have both had a very good relationship and, uh, they were allies. But after the incident, this whole, or this whole accident kind of shattered their pact and broke their friendship. So, that led to them being on bad terms for quite a while, for many decades.
This made Francis Gary Powers look like a coward for trading stuff to the Soviet
And that, that is our AHD project that we have picked me this year.
Thank you for coming and doing that part. Good job, guys.
Yes. I've got two things this evening. First one is that the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee held a second hearing on House Bill five eighty-three, and this will require the State Board of Education to issue a temporary, short-term substitute teaching license to an approved applicant who will teach five or fewer consecutive days in the same classroom. And it also requires the State Board to issue a temporary substitute teaching license to an approved applicant who will teach six or more consecutive days in the same classroom. And in addition, if certain requirements are met, it will also allow a student teacher to work as a substitute teacher for up to five days. So, the bill's got a lot of leeway and allows local school boards to determine the educational requirements of substitute teachers. House Bill one twenty-six, um, the House voted not to agree with the Senate's amendments to House Bill one twenty-six, which means it's sent back to the Senate. Under this Senate-passed version of the bill, school districts and other local governments would be prohibited from filing initial complaints to challenge a property's valuation. So, initial complaints could only be led by a property owner on property that they own. School boards can no longer do that. Still okay?
Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report with Lisa Lee's.
Yeah, so we're going to first start with Jordan Farr and Kira Habermell, our high school, school counselors, are going to talk to us about graduation requirements, which have changed over the years. And I want to ask you. So, you guys already have a handout, like, Jordan's going ahead and pulling up our website. So, as, um, there's three of us at the high school. Alyssa Sullen is our eighth and ninth grade counselor, and she couldn't join us this evening. She had a prior commitment. So, um, what we're showing to you is on our high school website. So, everything that we do and we work with the students is on the website. And so, this is under the high school website, and then School of College Career Counseling, and then this is under the graduation requirements. So, um, everybody's pretty familiar with the credits that you need to graduate. But since most of us in this room have graduated, our graduation requirements have changed. So, our current senior class is on one set of graduation requirements, which is up above. And then the ones that we're going to talk about are for the class of twenty-three and beyond. So, that is our current juniors, um, on down of what their requirements are for their graduation. So, there's actually three components to it. The first one are the twenty-two credits. They need four mathematics credits, four language arts credits, three social studies, three science, a half-credit PELT, a half-credit PE, and one final requirement. And then also in addition with the current eighth graders, that would be ninth graders, they're also required to earn a half-credit in financial literacy. So, that is not on there because, um, it'll be another requirement that we'll do for the eighth graders when they become freshmen. The second part is they have to demonstrate competency. And the bulk of our students will use this first one that is on the state of Ohio. They will take the ELA-two test their sophomore year, and right now, most of our freshmen are taking Algebra I. Next year, we're going to change up how we do our math tracking, and so some of our sophomores will take Algebra I, but they have to have a competence score of a six, eighty-four or higher. If they've met that score, then that would allow them to move to the third column. In the event that they do not reach competent, they could also take a college credit plus class in mathematics or English, or they could do two career-focused activities. Most of those career-focused activities happen for our students that are part of E-Hobby that are there doing a trade. They take tests and they do work keys that allow them to earn certification in an industry. Or the last way you can show competent is with the military enlistment. So, most of our students will fall under the ELA-two test they take their sophomore year and then the Algebra-I test. And then the third part, I want to talk about the seals. I'll let Jordan talk about the seals.
So, new are these seals. Um, a couple of these seals came out a few years ago, the by literacy and the Ohio means jobs readiness. But as far as new requirements go, every student must earn two seals. One of those seals must be a state seal, so you can see, um, the bottom ones are labeled local. Um, most of our students will earn the state seal either through the science seal, that is by scoring proficient on their biology and, of course, tests, which most students will take at the end of their sophomore year. Um, if they don't score proficient, which is a seven hundred or higher, so remember, six eighty-four was the competency, now we're talking seven hundred. If they don't score proficient on biology, they can also, if they earn a B or above, an advanced science class, which would be anything above biology, um, that we offer here at the high school, that is another way to earn the science seal. The citizenship seal, um, that comes from taking their US history test, scoring proficient seven hundred, um, or above, which they take at the end of sophomore year, and then social studies, three, government economics, which they take at the end of their junior year. So, they have to score proficient on both of those, or they can get a B average in those two classes, or mix and match, or take an AP test score, I think it's a two or above or a three or above, um, those, or CCP class, okay? Going back to the science seal, same thing for an AP test or a CCP. But like I said, most of our students will earn those two through their end-of-course exams or grade equivalencies. As far as the other seals go, technology, uh, the way that most of our students have an opportunity to earn that is by taking robotics one, two, and three. There are also some different programs at E-Hobby that our students who are enrolled in there can take and qualify. The Ohio means jobs readiness seal, this is a seal that a lot of students who have jobs can earn. They have to show, uh, proficient in fifteen different skillset areas, and they have to demonstrate those in two out of the grace of school worker, uh, community, and have different mentors and things like that. So, that's another state seal that I do feel is though our students are very capable of earning there. The college-ready seal, that comes off of ACT or SAT scores, and our students are getting ready, our juniors are taking that tomorrow. The honors diplomas seal, so instead of getting a separate, uh, kind of diploma, now they will get a seal for earning the honors diploma, and that's a state seal. Industry-recognized credential, just like Kira had said, under step-two showing competency, they can also then get a seal for that. So, it's almost like a double-dip scenario there, which is nice. Seal of by literacy, they have to be proficient in English and one other language, and in order to show their proficiency in that other language, they have to pass an AP test or some other pre-approved state tests in those foreign language. Military enlistment, once again, kind of like the industry-recognized credential, they have to provide us a copy of their D D four and four. And so, those are all of the state seals, okay? So, once again, students must have, must earn at least one of those, but they can earn more than one. Then our local seals are the fine and performing arts. They have to earn two full credits of fine arts and then, or participate in outside, two outside performances. Student engagement seal, this is for students in extracurricular activities, whether it be even, you know, band, choir, things like that, as well as different sports and clubs. They have to participate in karaoke. And then for community service, instead of having our diploma of service anymore, they can earn a seal, and that is by volunteering thirty hours of documented community service. So, and having conversation with a lot of our students this spring, a lot of them have plans to earn more than two, which is awesome, and a lot of them are re-qualified for many of them without even really intending to, so it's good.
So, in addition to the graduation, um, requirements changing, one of the other requirements that the state has put in place is that students from, starting in grades nine, have to have a graduation plan. So, as we scheduled with the students this year, we met with every single tenth and eleventh grader that we currently have, and we have them do a grad plan, saying what their, what their current plan is, what they plan to do, um, like, do they plan to go to college, work, military, and how we can help them get there. But then we also have to have them list what seals they're planning on earning. So, we have to help them make sure that they have all the paperwork that is turned in for those, as well as keep track of them and kind of monitor that they're making progress towards that. So, then down below there, there is all the forms that go with the seal. So, as a student is, thinks they've earned the seal and met the requirements, then we have the form that they can print here, but they're also in our office that they can get signed, a parent or guardian could sign them, and they would turn them into us, and they would then get, and turn them to Power School that then their parents and students can see that they actually earned that.
Any questions? Give me your questions. I wrote them down in my case. Anybody have any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to point out really quick anywhere, guys, with copy, we were trying to figure out why we had to form them up. It should be Algebra I on that state of Ohio and not Algebra II.
That's right.
Yep. We were trying to find where the error was.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We will move on to number two. One-year additional duties contract for the contract year twenty-one, twenty-two to Kurt Habermell, Kurt Habermell, co-assistant baseball coach, level thirteen, step six, one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents.
Hello. Second. Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson. Yes. Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero.
Number three, a one-year classified contract for the contract year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two to Chad Ridge Educational Aid, two days a week at thirteen dollars and twenty cents an hour.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero.
Number four, recommend a resolution to approve the agreement between Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities and Vermillion Local School District to provide eligible individuals with V L S D for placement at Murray Ridge School, see attachment A.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero.
Number five, recommend a resolution to approve the services agreement between Harness Health Partners LLC and Vermillion Local School District to provide one nurse to accompany staff and students on upcoming overnight field trips. Seventh grade is going to Chicago, sixth grade Newcom, and eighth grade to Washington, DC, at a total cost of seven thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, attachment B.
I'll move.
Second. Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero.
Number six, recommend a resolution to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three primary service agreement between the ESC of Lorraine County and Vermillion Local School District at a cost of one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, seven, well, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-six cents, see attachment C.
I'll move. Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero. Questions? Treasurer's report. Mr. Fung Shing.
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for February twenty-twenty-two, and that is attachment B.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero. What's that?
Yeah, it's forever. Usually it...
Okay. And there are a couple things in here that are a little different that might stand out from previous. Uh, so through the month of February, talking about general fund revenue, the district received sixteen point three million in general fund compared to fifteen point nine at the time last year, fifteen point one twenty. Really, the only thing here is just the timing of our tax advances, where you see there's a bit more tax money this year from the two counties than we have in the past there. Moving on to food service revenue, through the month of February, we received five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars on food service revenue compared to two hundred and sixty thousand at this time last year, and three hundred and ninety-three thousand in fiscal year twenty. Again, with all the lunches being fully reimbursed from the federal government, our revenue is going to continue to outpace our historical averages. You can see that on the bar graph specifically, us being the blue line mission.
Do they know when that's going to?
It's going to end in June, and it's not going to be reduced next year. Looking at all revenue through the month of February, the district received twenty-one point eight million in revenue compared to seventeen point six at this time last year, and seventeen point six again in fiscal year twenty. The establishment of the O-seven-O Capital Projects Fund, we did last board meeting, we advanced two million dollars in the general fund to that fund, that is why you're seeing that twenty-one million compared to seventeen point six million. We just inflated, so to speak, our revenue by making that transfer. You'll see the same thing happen, since we inflated on the revenue side, we'll also see an inflation on the expenditure side too. So, moving on to the expenditures, the month of February, the district spent seventeen point eight million from the general fund compared to fifteen point five million at this time last year, and sixteen point three in fiscal year twenty. Again, overall, the district is on pace to spend its historical averages, once you subtract out that two million dollar transfer from the Capital Projects Fund. Looking at food service, the month of February, we spent five hundred and fifty-three thousand compared to three hundred and ninety-six thousand last year at this time, and five hundred and sixty-six thousand in fiscal year twenty. You know, food service will continue to average higher than our historical averages. Primarily, we are serving more meals, so that's driving up our costs, we're buying more food than we typically have, and then also, at the same time, our, our cost for food is more than has been historically. Looking at all fund expenditures through the month, through the month of February, we've spent nineteen point seven million compared to seventeen point six million last year, and nineteen million in fiscal year twenty. Total expenditures so far this year are slightly higher than our historical averages. And then when we look at cash, this is where you'll see the main difference here. Looking through the month of, through the month of February, the district has eighteen point three million in cash compared to sixteen point four at this time last year, and fifteen million in fiscal year twenty. Moving on to food service, food service through the month of February, uh, the district has twenty, uh, two hundred and twenty-one thousand in cash compared to thirty-seven thousand at this time last year, and two hundred and five thousand in fiscal year twenty. Again, our, our cash is going to continue to grow, but then once we hit June, we'll stop receiving revenue, we'll start spending a lot of that down because we'll still have some salaries to pay for through the, through the summer months, we're not bringing in any revenue, and then it won't be really until October we see our first payment. And again, that'll be greatly reduced because we're not being fully subsidized in the next year. And then looking at all cash through the month of February, the district has twenty-three point six million in cash compared to nineteen point four last year, and eighteen point one in fiscal year twenty. And you get a lot of that has to do with money in, money out, transferring, all those are the ones there. Taking a look at our investments through the month of February, we earned a total of one hundred and five thousand dollars compared to one hundred and twenty thousand at this time last year. Insurance being where they are, we're going to continue to collect slightly less interest than we have, but those are starting to pick up a little bit, so good news on that side. Okay, number two. Recommend a resolution to accept the following donations made to the boys soccer program in memory of Cliff Parsons, as listed.
I'll move.
Second. Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero. Number three, recommend a resolution to accept the following donations made to the athletic department in memory of Ed Zimki, as listed.
I'll move. Second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero. Number four, recommend a resolution to accept the following donations made to the wrestling program, one hundred dollars from Mary Jo's Divinity.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero. Number five, recommend a resolution to accept the following donation made to the boys basketball program, one thousand dollars from one of their charities.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero. Number six, recommend a resolution to accept the following donations, uh, two coats made to the PHS baseball.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the roll, please. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Step.
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero. Number seven, recommend a resolution to accept two thousand dollars from Edward and Barbara Coball to the Coach Coball Scholarship.
I'll move.
Second. Second. Call the ball, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero.
Number eight, recommend a resolution to accept six hundred dollars from Anita Henry to the Dr. Darren T Schultz, theirs for now, the scholarship.
I'll move. Second.
Call the ball, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero.
Number nine, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the substitute administrative assistant hourly wage increase from ten dollars an hour to twelve dollars an hour, beginning March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
Call the ball, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
Motion approved four to zero.
Number ten, recommend a resolution to accept from Donald E. Ray five hundred dollars for the Mary Ray Scholarship.
I'll move. I'll second.
Call the ball, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahmel?
Yes.
Motion approved five to zero.
Number eleven, recommend a resolution authorizing the purchase of school bus chassis bodies through bids received from Ohio School Council, and that is attachment A.
I'll move.
I'll second. Call the ball, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahmel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
Motion approved five to zero.
Johnson, is there a multiple purchasing, is there, does it say how many are purchasing, or is it just, just to go out the bit?
It's just allowing us to go out the bit.
Okay.
One, it does go out the bit, there'll be two buses this year.
Two.
Yeah, well, they're taking a year so that, to show up, so we want to make sure we can get it.
Is that usually what we do, is two at a time?
Normally, we do one, but this year, just because they're taking so long, we want to make sure we have enough.
All right.
So we might end up skipping a year.
Thanks.
Number twelve, recommend a resolution accepting the announced rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county auditor, and as attached as have.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any questions? Call the ball, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahmel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
Motion approved five to zero.
Number thirteen, recommend a resolution to approve master service agreement between Meta Solutions and Information Technology Center in the local school district, beginning July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for fiscal support, state support, SIS support, EMIS support, library services, and IEPs.
I'll move. Second. Any questions? Call the ball, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahmel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
Motion approved five to zero.
Number fourteen, recommend a resolution to approve the agreement between Connect and Vermillion Local School District from July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Connect provides earned access and service twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week in school district.
I'll move. I'll second.
Typically, I would say typically, I wouldn't recommend a contract this large or this long at the same time here, but Connect's providing a great service, and they're also providing a really good price for the lock, seven five percent.
Any other questions? Call the ball, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahmel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stapp?
Yes.
Motion approved five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to, if you have any items for discussion?
I just wanted to mention that we have our high school musical coming up this weekend, and if anybody, I know we're going open night, but it's always amazing, try to make it there, it's always great, and I just wanted to thank everybody for all the donations, that is an insane amount of donations. Community is always awesome with that, supporting everybody. That's all I need to say.
Any else?
Just one thing, first of all, I apologize for being late. No good excuse other than I'm still at seven o'clock. I even had a reminder, I had a reminder set on my phone, you know, and then, I'll tell you, I'll tell you the reason I'm here, even now, is because my nephew texted me and said, come be right at the meeting, I presented my history prep. So, anyway, apologize for that. The one thing I wanted to bring up, and it's not really anything that I'm necessarily looking for action on, just something to think about, and I think I like brought it up more than before, but like, right now, my daughter is on the sixth grade New Hop trip that they just left today on, and I know the seventh grade is getting ready to go to Chicago, and for trips like this, it's still, I'm, and I think I'm gonna reach out to Beth and just ask what her gut feeling is on it, you know, but like, for trips like this, it still concerns me that, you know, if it's for, why do we go on these trips, right? Is it educational, and if it is, what are we doing about the kids that can't afford to go? I mean, having them sit behind in school really, to me, isn't fair. And if we, you know, it's great that, and you know, the funny thing is, you know, some of these kids, might be their only chance ever to go to Chicago, right? Well, the ones that are going are probably the ones that are gonna go there sometime in their life, it's not that, you know what I mean? We're not, are we really serving everybody, and are we really doing the right thing by everybody? I mean, it's a cool opportunity, but I just don't know that we're including everyone. So, just something to think about.
Some kind of fundraising or something, help those kids raise money, or how?
Yeah, I mean, you know, at least give everybody an opportunity somehow, right? And if you really don't want to go, then you don't want to go, but my gut tells me that there's kids that aren't going because they can't afford to go.
I just talked to her on that too, because Abby's going to the Greenfield trip, and in the, Henry Ford museum, and it's the same thing, not every kid is gonna go, it's.
Basically, they'll have something fun for them to do, but.
She said they'll have something fun to do with their, they're not gonna leave school, but still, like, you need to make sure these kids are going. If they're going, they all may go, at least had the chance.
Have an opportunity, right?
Had the chance, so.
And I think I read somewhere, like, for the Chicago trip, it's, it's the first hundred to sign up, and then after that, you're on a waiting list.
Yeah. Get it on a bus.
Right, or, you know.
Well, I mean, it.
Or let's come up with a trip where.
Yeah, for example.
That helps everyone. Yeah, the same fifth grade, the first bus, if the first bus is filled, then you have so many, the second bus, you don't go.
Yeah, we have two buses, we don't have a third.
No, I know.
Yeah, I agree.
That's what that company that I was telling us that.
Yeah, right. We have two buses, but maybe a third.
Have enough kids to make it worth it.
So if you don't make that first try, you don't go.
Yeah.
At least you have forty if they're busted. Something to just think about in general, you know, when we do these kind of things.
Yeah. And I believe, at least I would hope, you know, that if any parent reached out, like, hey, listen, I'd really like to show, go all the way, but I think we would find a way, no matter what, but it's.
There are, they have, there are some funds that where people do donate, we do have all the, so.
But I think it's about getting that word out there, and then also finding a way so that people don't have to reach out and say, yeah.
That's the most, if they reach out, it's a principle.
And that's it, so it's definitely an odd sort of situation.
Right, but a lot of you, from a pride perspective, right, you may not want to reach out, and you may not, you might just tell your kid, hey, just, you're not gonna go, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, if nothing else, maybe we, maybe we make it a point to reach out to the families that are maybe already on free and reduced lunch, and say, hey, you know, we know this is coming up, is this something that you considered?
Yeah, or the kids that didn't get signed up, right, that didn't sign up, make sure, say, hey, we just want to make sure, is this something?
Yeah.
Make sure it's not money, make sure it's not, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that way it's not, that's why they need to reach out.
Yeah, and that's something, I think, in each building, that we could definitely discuss with each principal, and say, you know, I'm sure everybody has a system of finding out on.
Yeah, because sometimes, my oldest son was, like, he was not spending the night anywhere.
Yeah.
Whether it was a trip, it was, it wasn't, it wasn't because I wasn't gonna send him, it was, he just didn't want to go, but like, how do we make sure we find out what the, the reason in is without intruding and then keeping it?
Yeah.
In a way that, that everybody feels.
Comfortable.
Comfortable, yeah.
Absolutely.
So we can have those discussions.
All right. Anything else? Moving on to number eight, the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the Board, the treasurer, or superintendent request that any item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Number one is the minutes of the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular attachment I. Number two is approve the following employment action, resignations, as listed.